The January twenty fourth, twenty twenty three meeting Wellington Board of Trustees time being six thirty. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
May I get a roll call, please?
Trusty Gator.
Here.
Trusty Daly.
Present.
Trusty Mason.
Here.
Trusty Teets.
Here.
Trusty Wigan.
Here.
Mayor Proton McDonald.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Thank you.
Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? Any conflicts of interest on the agenda this evening? All right, now we'll move on to public comment. Individuals wishing to speak can speak on non-agenda items. Please fill out the form on the table, state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Once again, this is for non-agenda items.
So Matthew Mullet. My concerns been for a while is the water scenario that we have for like the dispenser. You're trying to keep animals alive and they drink twenty-four seven. So to deal with business hours trying to get water doesn't work very well. So I would love to see something better, something different for, and I'm not the only one, I know other people. The complication of just getting some water has been difficult, so I would love to see it changed.
Thank you. Is a clarifying question, Mayor. Yeah, just clarify, you're speaking to the bulk water dispenser, is that correct? Okay, perfect, just want to make sure. I'll take it there's no more further public comment. Non-agenda items?
No.
Yep, you got it. Yeah, that'll work.
Um, hi, Don Peacock. Um, and actually, it's just a real quick something that I was hoping perhaps Town Administrator Garcia might be able to put on a possibility list with the website. I love how it's, you know, it looks great and everything, but like on the Board of Trustees page and any other page, it may also kind of fit this criteria. Would it be possible where it has view agenda, view minutes, view, which whatever? Could there be a view video tab that will connect YouTube to make it easier for residents to find the recorded meetings?
Previous meetings.
Yes, because I I do believe there are people in the town that might be difficult for them to
Yeah.
get to, so.
Thanks, Tom. All right. Next, we have the consent agenda. It consists of the following items, the minutes of January tenth, twenty twenty-three Board Meeting of Trustees Resolution zero three dash twenty twenty-three approving the Town Administrator's Plan of Organization Resolution for twenty twenty-three adopting amendment one Colorado Regional Opiate Intergovernmental Agreement Loma County Region. And also Resolution five twenty twenty-three making appointments to Parks, Recs, Open Space and Trail Advisory Board. Can I get? Yes.
I'd like to request to pull item number two, please, for brief discussion. I don't have any concerns, I just have a question about it.
Sure. Item two, that's three twenty twenty-three?
Had one brief, just wanted to make sure that on the the amendment to the opioid, that is simply adding SS Park, correct? That's nothing else than just adding SS Park.
That's correct.
Perfect.
Uh, may I get a a motion for the consent agenda?
A move that we approve the consent agenda excluding item number two, resolution number three dash twenty twenty-three.
May I get a roll call?
Trusty Gator.
Yes.
Trusty Daly.
Yes.
Trusty Mason.
Yes.
Trusty Teets.
Yes.
Trusty Wigan.
Yes.
Mayor Proton McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, on to the first action item. Ordinance one twenty twenty-three relating to amending the town of Wellington Marijuana Ordinance. Ordinance, Mr. Sapienza.
There, members of the board. Um, the ordinance that's in front of you today was postponed two weeks ago at the Board of Trustees meeting. The ordinance is unchanged from the ordinance that was included in that packet. I have included in the packet for you a number of letters from interested parties, some of which were not included at the previous one. They've arrived since that meeting or perhaps since the work session itself. These letters are from generally from parties that are interested in bringing the marijuana industry to Wellington. Certainly, these letters do not cover the entire range of opinions on this ordinance, but those are the letters that I had received that were sent to my office, I want to make sure that they were available to the board. A number of these letters came from party attorneys and consultants that I have discussed this with a number of times. One thing that I I wanted to let you all know is that a lot of these individuals are very interested in providing education or information to any members of the board. So if any members of the board have any interest in discussing these issues further or any issues related to marijuana, I would recommend you reach out to these people or contact me, I can help you get in touch. Number of years ago, when I was doing research on marijuana policy, I was able to cultivation. Was helpful in understanding a lot of the issues that you might be wrestling with related to security or control of product and things like that. So that that offer has been open, so I want to make sure you know about that. At the work session, there was a discussion, the work session last week, there was a lot of discussion of setbacks, public zoning, a number of other items. I did not receive any guidance at that time that the board wanted to have any changes made to the ordinance that was in front of you. So none of that has been included. I did want to address two issues. One, there's a question from Trusty McDonald regarding kind of the application process for the applications that were received. And I wanted to, I'm not sure my answer gave the full. Not sure I gave the a full answer out of the code, I'm quite quote the code properly there. And the marijuana ordinance in town Wellington says the local licensing authority shall not receive or act upon an application for the issuance of a local license pursuant to this article unless the individual or the applicant has a right to the premises or had and has met the zoning and setback. And so because it says that licensing authority cannot receive or act upon a license, it's our policy that the application is not sent to the local licensing authority unless the zoning and setback verification form has been filled out. And in one case, that form was completed, they met the zoning and setback, so that application was then sent to the licensing authority who received it and acted upon it. The other application did not meet the zoning and setback requirements, so that application was sent back without being processed. So I just want to kind of clarify how that operated. Another question that came up from the work session came from Trusty Teets following the work session, actually. There was a public comment, I think, two weeks ago, and I believe at the work session, it was mentioned briefly regarding the ability of the town to cap the number of licenses that are available in the town. And that wasn't discussed at the work session, but Trusty Teets brought that, asked me some number of questions about that after the work session. So wanted to let you know that municipalities are able to cap the number of licenses if they would like to. A number of towns do do this. Grand Junction, for example, has a cap of ten marijuana retail licenses in the entire town or city. Eagle has a ordinance that says you can have one license of various types per five thousand people in the population. So there's a number of ways that could be done, but that question came up kind of late. I do not have really any additional information on that, and that's not really being recommended here for this ordinance today. But I wanted to at least let the board know about that. So again, the ordinance in the packet is unchanged from a couple of weeks ago, I'm going to have to answer questions. I know there's a number of individuals here that would like to give public.
Any comments or questions from the Board of Trustees, start with Trusty Daly.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you. Trusty Gator.
No questions.
Trusty Teets.
No.
No.
No questions.
No questions.
All right. Are any comments from the public on this agenda item?
Members of the board, hello, good evening, my name is Paul and Mud. I own a cannabis compliance consulting firm. I live in Thornton, Colorado. As I understand it, this evening you're voting on codifying the variance request process for potential cannabis dispensaries. A process that, as I understand, was also already in place previous to this revision. It's just now making it a little bit more clear for the potential applicants for dispensary what they can go through to request a variance. But in my opinion, I don't really think there's any particular change other than codifying it and putting it into the particular marijuana ordinance. As I've tried to gather information before talking today, I, and I remind me how much time I have left, actually. But as I, as I gathered information today, I'd heard from members of the board saying that it's important for everybody to take into consideration the will of the voters. And I just wanted to take the opportunity this evening to mention that the will of the voters, as far as I understood it with the ballot measure, there's three particular points, one being that there are medical and recreational dispensaries in the town. Dispensaries plural, as of right now, you have none. You will eventually, as I understand it, have one. However, that's as close to a monopoly as you can get, and it's extremely difficult for anyone else to be able to achieve the end result, which is having a medical or recreational dispensary, given the current setback requirements. So first and foremost, the will of the voters is to simply have dispensaries. That's not happening right now, given the current restrictions, regulations in place. Number two, tax said dispensaries, that particular tax revenue is not on the budget currently because there are no dispensaries available. Like goes without saying, but ultimately, the third will of the voters would be to also give the power to the board to adjust these regulations as you see fit, starting this year. Please don't forget that, that's also part of the will of the voters, too. You guys have the opportunity to take into consideration, use the resources at your disposal to make corrections to these restrictions in order to have dispensaries plural and to tax them and add that money to the budget. How much time do I have left? Gosh, I have so much to say.
I didn't start mine.
Oh, cool. Sorry, I'm going to be for a while, actually. Look, I, what I want to say very quickly is that I understand that the board is worried about having too many dispensaries and about having those dispensaries be a negative impact on the community. I don't represent anybody up here but myself. I'm taking this time after being in the cannabis industry for over thirteen years to say that I tried to open a dispensary in this town and I can't do it without, in my estimation, two to four million dollars. And I'm willing to bet that that's probably what the existing dispensary spent or potential dispensary spent on getting open. You have a unique opportunity here in Wellington to support small business, to support people that have limited resources and give them an opportunity that in my experience haven't been, hasn't been available to the industry since twenty twenty ten, twenty thirteen, once twenty fourteen shifted and we had recreational cannabis. Most of the municipalities put caps, they put moratoriums, or they put lottery systems in place, which cater to a more pay-to-play option. If you have two to four million dollars, you can build brand new in C-three zone district, keep it away from the schools, keep it away from everything you need to keep it away from here, and possibly get open in probably a year or two because you're building from scratch. I just want to say that I, I just want to ask or challenge the board to reach out to your constituents. Talk to them about what they, what their opinion is on the setbacks. Because if you leave it as it stands right now with just a variance request, an overly burdensome variance request, you will not have any more dispensaries open until you change those setbacks. And I think if you take the approach of changing the setbacks, making it black and white and excluding the variance process, you at least give them a chance, but if you get to a point where you have too many dispensaries, you can just tap it. Or you can put a moratorium and you can talk to your constituents and figure out a reasonable number. But yeah, I spent way too much time, I appreciate the opportunity. And I'd love to offer my time or my services to be able to answer any questions that anybody has about this. Because I think some of that one warranted fears are based on incomplete and incorrect information. I appreciate it, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening again, board, my name is Mario Nicholas, I'm up here representing Piper Ogden. First, I do want to say I'm so glad you keep on having these meetings because I get to drop by the human being, which is delicious. So thanks for that. A couple of things I want to address, first of all, Trusty Teets, it is pretty regular for cities and municipalities across the state to adopt a limitation. That said, I do think if you change the setbacks so that you allow a few more to be in here, you are already almost geographically going to be limiting that. I think, I think Mr. Burr did analysis with a map that was provided to you on what would be available. And just remember, even once you have that, once one goes up, it limits a whole another section because of the five hundred foot. So I don't think that this town, even if you moved it back to a thousand foot setback, I don't think you're going to ever have more than maybe like three, possibly four. That would be here, just, just for that reason, so I do want to bring that up. I'd also like to point out that there is a lot of discussion about will of the voters. And I understand that because you're all elected officials, but I would point out that you, you can't have your cake and eat it too. You can't change the substantive piece on on licensing and add in licensing and community requirements, which we agree with. And we were able to wait with Mr. Sapienza with, Sapienza, sorry, butchered your name. You can't change that and ignore and say, because that's not what was about the will of people. And then say, oh, we can't change the setbacks because that's the will of people. You either are changing it because you think we need to make this better, which we think is exactly what you should do, or you're not making any changes because that was the will of people. So I would like you to keep that consistency in mind. I do want to point out that change of the setbacks versus the, it would actually be probably beneficial for the town. If it's just going through the variance process, one, you're going to have more costs with the various processes, just in procedure going through. Also, I will point out, if those are denied on a regular basis, it's going to lead to litigation. Because one of the, you, you get an appeal directly to the district court. So if they're being denied regularly, I would, I would suspect that was going to happen. The final thing I'd like to say that's been bothering me since two weeks ago, when Mr. Donnelly came up and was testifying about paying multiples for a piece of property, which turns out now to be the only piece of property that matches the setbacks, and he did that before annexation. It just has an appearance, I think, for a lot of people about something that wasn't quite right. If he paid extra amount of money for land and then it was annexed, and oh, lo and behold, it's the only piece of land that's going to be allowed to have a dispensary in this town. You can, you can nip that in the bud by simply saying, we're going to change the setbacks so we have some competition and move from there. Thank you all, I'm glad to answer questions if you have more that I can answer just because of my expertise, now or later.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Hi, guys, I'm Melanie Murphy. The proposed ordinance amendments, sorry, excuse me, give me a second. Okay, the proposed ordinance amendments provide increased regulation to an already highly restrictive process. Voters just now discovered at the time of original adoption, there existed no parcels that met the zoning and setback requirements outlined in the regulations. Incidentally, incidentally, the only parcel under consideration at this time was annexed into the town by this board and rezoned by this governing body and required the dispensary owner to buy out and close down a daycare in order to meet the setback requirements. This is not what we voted for. I've learned that one applicant can't get approved only because they are near a detention pond. Another applicant was rejected, although being properly zoned C-three adjacent to I twenty-five and tractor trailer parking area because they are only over a quarter mile away from a daycare, not even a school. These unreasonable applications are not what we voted for. Now you look, now you look to further regulate this process for other existing parcels by assigning any variance requests to the more restrictive guidelines of the Board of Adjustments. Additionally, you insert needs and desires clause not previously included, along with the setback change R-three not previously included, all additional restrictions. I encourage you as trustees, the people we voted for, to reevaluate the impractical aspects, interpretations, and inconsistent enforcement of this ordinance. This is not what we voted for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Peacock, and I just have, just have a few thoughts on this. Actually, I really expect there to be more people to speak, and it's interesting that the only ones here speaking so far are pro for, you know, supporting. Couple of things, one. What like with the, with the, and that's cement, but asphalt. Had to go in and find them in a very non, sorry, I'm exhausted from traveling. It was not an easy website at the time to navigate, and so I really don't know that. There are many people who voted either for or against that really could tell you what the setbacks were at the time. I do support the rezoning that you discussed at the work session last week, talking about the rezoning of the public areas. And I know that Trusty, Kenny? Okay, so that's just wrong, sorry, okay.
Sorry.
So, sorry, okay, Daly had mentioned, you know, that they're, they're, you know, in future pacing, there may be trails going through this and the other, well, let's get that in writing, let's put it in there so that we can take a look at public places and get them rezoned. I think that it is a little absurd that there there is no possibility at this point of any applications being approved other than going through the variance process, again, subjective process in my opinion. In the, like, in the town, there's just no way that any can open. And if you're really talking about a town that supports you know, business that is open to receiving taxes and boosting our bottom line with the finances and such, I just, this is just really not a capitalist way to go around it. And it really, in my opinion, the way that it looks right now, it's kind of scary because it really looks very political. I mean, it just, in my opinion, it looks like someone's got to grease somebody's hand to get something done. And there is no way other than going through all these different processes, there's no straightforward way to get anything done. So, just some thoughts.
How are you guys doing tonight? My name's Brian White, and I'd just like to request that a retail or medical marijuana store license shall be, shall not be permitted to located with, or, you know, within five hundred feet of parcel zone P that contain a community facility or civic space such as terms are defined in land use codes or any parcel containing another retail or medical marijuana store license.
Hello and good evening, my name's Robin Oda Bennett. I work in the cannabis industry, I've been in the cannabis industry for six years. I'm a consultant, I handle all of our marketing from the south end of Fort Collins. I live here in Wellington. I do think that the town itself has seen considerable growth in the four years that I've lived here and even more since, you know, the town has started to, to take off and build more homes. More people are coming here, different walks of life are coming here, people who have several different wide ranges of interests. And cannabis was one of those topics that was voted on, the will of the voters is that they want dispensaries to be in Wellington. Even if it is limited to one or two to begin with, three or four max, just for the population that we have and the traffic that we'd see from other towns nearby like Pierce or Alter Nun. We are limiting ourselves for growth and an opportunity that could provide, provide extra additional revenue to the city, to the schools, to the water issue, to the splash pad. The cannabis industry does provide a substantial amount of tax revenue for the state of Colorado. The marijuana enforcement department has done a great job of regulating the amount of licenses that go out. They do thorough inspections of every dispensary and grow facility. I'm happy to give you guys, any of you, a tour of our grow facility in South Fort Collins if you'd like, so you can see the security that's in place. Every room has to have a camera in every four corners at all times, and the state can tap into that feed at any point that they want to access that information. We have to backdate everything for ninety days so that information is accessible to anybody who requests it. I would just say that the variance that we have right now in place with opening up a dispensary in Wellington is limiting the growth that we could be seeing. With the volume of people that have moved here over the last four or five years alone, you're going to see people who are interested in bringing that business to this town, and we could definitely benefit to provide more for our students in terms of new computers, new school books. The state of Colorado alone has already provided so much for the educational system. They're opening up an entirely new recreational facility in Aurora based off of cannabis revenue alone. It's a one-of-a-kind facility, and I think that Wellington lacks a community center. Wellington lacks the ability to have a place for kids to go outside of the park. And I think that we're missing an opportunity, if we're not going to take a shot and see if this is even possible. And the amount of like hoops that we have to jump through to even make this a possibility is just kind of ridiculous. It's, it's an application process, the city has the final say, but if the voters are saying this is what they want, then it's something that needs to be taken into consideration and not be limited to just a flat no, and let's make this as complicated as possible. It needs to be a simpler, smoother process for applicants to be able to open their spaces if they wish to in the city of Wellington. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Not all at once, guys, not all at once.
Okay, I was just going to let them all say what they want, bad stuff about me and then come up afterward. I thought I could do, take care of it all at once, but that's fine. I'm Tom Donnelly, I'm here on behalf of Debris Properties LLC, which is currently developing a dispensary property here in Wellington. I paid attention to the, to the last town board meeting, I listened in to your work session. And I, and I feel at the town board, if I was going to take a straw poll, as a guy who's been in politics a long time, I get, I get a sense that you really want to take some kind of action on these, on these setbacks. I think you feel like there's a, there's a, an issue there, mechanical issue with how the, how the setbacks have been applied and, and what the potential, what that potentially does to the ability of the industry to operate here reasonably in the town. And so, first of all, I want to just say, we're willing to work as part of that process. I know myself and my owners are more than willing to try to work and provide guidance based on our own perspective here to the town board and to your staff to try to come up with regulations that really will work to satisfy the industry. This capitalistic drive of a lot of folks that we've heard here today, as well as satisfy the will of the voters, right? And that's important, too, and so we'd be happy to work with them. I've talked to some of these guys and I think we're, we're more than, we have a good relationship, we're a competitive relationship, but we're a competitive relationship, but, but not adversarial necessarily. Um, we'd be willing to work with them and, and try to, and try to help you as well as your citizens, to hear input from your citizens and, and really move this forward. I think, uh, you know, you know, you're on thin ice when almost every letter you have is from an attorney, right? And so you need to be very careful. And even the attorney that spoke, I mean, I couldn't help but notice he was calling me out, but one thing he did say, if maybe you paid attention to it, too, was he said if you, if you approve one of these and you don't approve the next one, you're probably gonna get sued. That's, that's the downside of what you've got, what you're, what you're looking at and undertaking tonight, is that it's gonna appear, there's gonna be the ability for it to appear very subjective. So you didn't, no one's talking about limiting one type of setback, whether it's schools, whether it's these, these uh, P-zoned areas, whether it's residential zones, you're gonna look at all, all of these, um, setbacks as, as the same. And so, um, I think that you're gonna have a difficult time, because obviously I don't think anybody up here feels every different kind is the same. You don't feel like the school is the same as the detention pond that these guys are, are up against. I mean, you don't. And so, um, what you really need is a more, I think, holistic look at the regulatory, regulatory framework. And I want to tell you really quick, Bertha, Bertha has two of these. Milliken has one, I think. Fort Collins has a hundred and seventy thousand people and a college. They have eleven retail marijuana dispensaries. That's one every fifteen thousand people. You have twelve thousand people in Wellington. You can't support a huge number of these. Okay, you need to look at a way to limit through licensure or setback. And I think if you don't do so, your town is gonna.
Wish you had. Thank you.
Might have been the one time I would have yielded some time to Tom. I liked the way he was saying it. Um, Schoolery, we'd like to request the Board of Trustees to modify the marijuana ordinance to read, "A retail medical marijuana store license shall not be permitted to be located within five hundred feet of parcel zone P, public district that contains a community facility or civic space as such terms are defined in the land use code or any parcel containing another retail medical marijuana store. Uh, we believe this is in line with the will of the voters and the land use code of the town of Wellington. Um, detention pond, twelve, twelve and a half acre detention pond is not, it's not a park, it's not a swimming pool. It's, it's a, it had an Ecall I break out over the summer. It's, it needs to be cleaned up. We'll make good neighbors. Thank you. No more further comment. All right. May I get a motion in a second on this agenda item?
I would like to make a motion that we table this agenda item until the next regular board meeting for an opportunity to discuss the items that were received from the attorneys since the work session and the public comment that was received this evening.
I'll second that motion.
Are there any further comments, direction from board? Sorry, trustee Daley.
Just so, uh, we have some specific items to consider, and, and so I know just maybe a bullet list of what are those, what are those items that we want to consider so we can maybe get more information on those, or, or maybe direct staff to provide more information? I heard some new things that I hadn't heard before, but just to kind of clarify what we want more, more information on.
While you have the floor, do you mind sharing what the new things were that?
Oh, I mean, I heard some new things, but I was just curious what yours were based on your recommendation to table. So the, the things that I wrote down in particular were, um, two to four million dollars to open a new business. So obviously the way that, um, the process working right now is we're not promoting small business. So that was something that kind of cut a little bit. Um, but obviously, we've seen that that's the case, given that, we've never had any item come to us before where we've had so many lawyers. So, uh, that's probably an indication of how much money is behind this effort. So, as somebody who's always behind small business efforts, that's concerning, but also I understand this is a competitive market, so I don't know who, who are we to stand in the way of that either. So, so that's, that's something that stood out to me. Um, and then the question of, I, I guess the question of whether or not we should really reconsider setbacks. Um, I know we've talked about not being willing to do that, but whether or not we're honestly prohibiting opening businesses based on that is maybe something that we do really need to consider. So I, I didn't, I don't know if there's any other new items that you guys were considering that we should talk through, but I, I just want to know what those items are before we table it so that we're not having the exact same conversation next week before knowing what to reconsider.
Trustee Wigan?
Yeah, one thing I'd like, excuse me, one thing I'd like to see, and what was brought up quite a bit here, is the amount of dispensaries per population. When you start looking at Fort Collins, one out of, you know, one per seventeen thousand people, so many of the other ones, you know, one thou, uh, one per ten, one per five, we need to put a cap on it. We don't need to have marijuana dispensers on every corner. That would be a good way to limit it. That would be a good way that, you know, with the changes of rezoning with the variance tools that they have, they will get more uh, dispensaries here in town, but we need a way of controlling it to make sure it's good for our citizens. You know, we were elected after the marijuana. I'm a little bit more conservative. I've heard somebody say it's more kind of a political thing here. Yeah, people were concerned about this. They don't want to have an overabundance of this that could bring in other problems to this town. So we need to have some type of control, and I think limiting to the, uh, the number per population, I think is a great idea.
Trustee Teets?
So, and that was one of my questions as well, is, is if you look at and doing a lot of research and having a lot of conversations with many different sides of this aspect, um, what I'm mainly looking at is what those setting up, when you look at, like, trustee Daley speaks of setback changes. If there was a cap on the amount of dispensaries that could open here in town, would that change the way people look at that setback? That's something we can't really answer. That's something I would love to see public feedback on, how that actually pertains to, if we have that cap set in place and we know those expectations, decreasing those setbacks, what would that mean to our town if we had that cap set up? Does it decrease that worry? The other question that I had about this, and this is kind of directed towards, um, I'm sorry, Mr. Mud, um, is the discussion of how much it would cost to actually open a business here in town. Um, being a business owner here in town, I know it's expensive. Um, it's a discussion that I have on a regular basis involving a lot of different permitting fees and items like that. Um, the, I would like to actually know when we're looking at these discussions, what was the largest setback in your application process, of course, of, but being denied? Can we have that question answered? If it was setback requirements, if it was the type of land he was looking at, is that something that we can have answered? I can also reach out to him.
I mean, well, are you, are you, okay, are you spot, are you talking to Scoot or are you talking to Colin?
No, I'm talking to Mr. Mud. He said that he had applied.
So, I, I, this, this is gonna get sloppy real quick if we go this route. So, yeah, bullet points of what you would like us to give to the town administrator and the attorney so we can, we can postpone this and, and bring it back with some knowledge.
So I guess that would be one of my questions is.
And, and then I believe Colin's information is on the letter he sent to us, and you can feel free to reach out to him at that point.
The.
So you're, you're saying caps and possible setback changes?
Caps, possible setback changes, um, and it was brought up in public comment, the P for.
For part, yeah.
The detention areas. This is, I think, things that we probably really do need to look at and address. Um.
Is that, is that it?
In general, yes.
Okay. You're on caps, not setbacks?
On caps, correct.
Okay. Trustee Gator?
Um, I, I do not have a, if the board really feels that we need to have further discussion on that, that's fine. Um, I just, I would echo similar to what trustee Daley said. I don't want to keep rehashing the same things that we've rehashed over and over again. So if we're actually gonna have different conversations about different issues, that's fine. If we're just gonna have the same conversations about the same things we've already decided, that's fine. The other question I have is, are these relevant to the, and, and the answer might be yes, but to what we're looking at specifically here, because the things that we're looking at specifically with this is the R3, which was a non-existent zoning, and getting that added in. It's clarifying the variance process. Now, I understand if we have changed the setbacks, there might be as many variances, but there could still be variances, right? It doesn't mean there won't be, and that needs to be fixed, because right now we have a variance process which says you can get a variance, but then they don't have to listen to it. That's a problem. And then the third one is the language of, um, the community input into the process. And I don't, I have not heard anyone say that that's a bad thing once we adjusted the wording. So what I'm hearing are all separate things from what we're being asked to vote on here. So if we need to have, so the question I have is, if it doesn't have to do with these things, I would prefer to get this done and fix those existing problems. And if the board truly feels we need to have a conversation about caps and setbacks and the other things, let's put an act, let's put another separate ordinance on our next meeting, and let's only discuss those, because what's gonna happen is now we're re-going through all of this on top of adding new things. So that would be my preference. If truly the part we want to discuss is the setbacks for really the schools, that's, that's what the problem is. It's the schools and then potentially the, the P-public. I haven't heard issues with the other ones, but setbacks in caps, I, I would prefer to have that as a separate item and get this dealt with. So, because these are existing issues that aren't gonna go away just because we changed setbacks. They might be less relevant, but it still is a problem if we have a variance process that technically is not binding, if you go to it for whatever reason. So that's kind of my thoughts on that.
This is exactly why I asked this question, is because all the items that have come up as items are separate of everything that's currently on the resolution.
Nothing, yeah. I mean, nothing we've really truly discussed.
Yes, nothing.
In depth.
So I'm, I'm happy, and I, and I don't know if this would work for those members who'd like to do that. If we commit to saying at our next board meeting, we will have, staff will have a separate ordinance, but, sorry.
Trustee Mason?
I, you, you, you first.
I, yeah, I agree with trustee Gator on this. I think we need to get this particular agenda item done. Obviously, there's other things we want to talk about, license caps, that sort of stuff. I, I'm gonna be honest, I'm, I'm gonna say I'm, I'm not for license caps. What I am for is for the ordinance that was proposed. The ordinance that's, that, that, that had been passed by the voters had clear setback requirements in there. It did not have caps in there. What I am about is the setbacks that are as written. I'm not about caps. But again, I'm gonna say very much the same things that I said in the last, uh, work session, which is that, you know, I, we're not trying to be Garden City here. We're not trying to be North Fort Collins. We're not trying to do any of that. I, three, maybe four dispensaries sounds kind of ridiculous to me when you consider that we have residents all the time. Let's say, well, there's three coffee shops and two dollar stores and two auto parts places. And, you know, so I hear that all the time. I can't even imagine what it would be like if we had three or four dispensaries up here. So, I like, I like the setbacks. I like them where they are.
Thank you. Mayor Proten?
Sure. First, I'd like to apologize to my constituents for what may have perceived as storming out at the last work session. I was in a hurry to get out of here in case you weren't aware there was a major snowstorm going on, and I had to be several hours away very quickly. But I think that that's part of it, too, is that we had the snowstorm as well. So the people that had intended, I think, on being at that meeting as a resource and being available, weren't available. We've received additional information since the meeting. I agree with trustee Daley's. A lot of the points that you brought up were similar ones that I had this evening. And in addition to that, a very interesting point that I like that somebody brought up was the opportunity for a field trip, because we've toured water treatment plants, we've toured the poop plant and the trash facilities, and how many of the board members here have been inside a dispensary or seen how one actually operates on the inside? I mean, other than just, like, the front doors. I mean, you, you case it out, right? We're trying to make an educated decision here. So I think that before we, and trustee Gator, I, I understand your point about wanting to move forward. But we didn't have all of the information to make a clear decision, and the community feedback this evening was compelling. And I think it is really worth a strong look. And logistically, approving an ordinance and then having to republish and repost and keep doing that, it doesn't make sense. And then trying to put a half-notched appeal process up there and a half-cocked ordinance that we know has problems. We know it has problems. So why would we go ahead and approve it tonight, knowing that it has problems again, when we knew it was an issue in the past? So I really would encourage the board to take one last pause at this, and I won't delay it any further or cause any kerfuffle, but I, this is hindering small business and capitalism. And this is small government throwing up red tape at its finest to make business prohibitive in the community. So, thank you for the opportunity to hear the community this evening, and to hear me out just now, but I really think that we should pause on this.
I'm gonna say my piece here, and then we can, we can go back around, I guess. Um, I don't know if you guys read the letter from Mr., Mr. Mud. Um, the proposed changes, in his opinion, would approximately four dispensaries would allow approximately four dispensaries to open here in town, in the proposed ordinance. I don't, I didn't, I didn't see that in our, our work session, but, um, I'm also not a consultant who does this for a living. Um, I, we've heard enough this evening from everybody here. I think we've heard from the vast majority of the board that we want to look at other avenues. Further investigation into building something that, that's going to work and work properly, not something, like, we can't, we can't piecemeal this together. I mean, I'm, 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 I'm like with trustee Mason and trustee Gator, and then I'm, I'm with everybody else, and so but then I have the public comment, um, we need, we need to do something more. Um, we need to get done at some point, and we need to get done rather quickly, but we need to do it well. And I don't think pushing this thing through tonight is doing it well, or doing anybody any favors. So the board, the town, the businesses, the residents. So, from what I gathered, we want more information on setbacks, the P-zoning, and caps. Whether I, and I, I mean, I'm not necessarily for caps, but if that's something we need to, we need to do, then that's something we need to look into at least. Further comment, trustee Gator?
Only thing I'd ask, and I'll support, since it seems like the board, I, I don't, I'm not here to try and force anything. If we really need more time to talk about it, I'm okay with that. What I would ask is, for those of you who are asking for this, that you want more information, please send very specific information to staff so that.
Yes.
Don't just, like, give them caps. Tell them what you want to see so that we can have that detailed conversation, so that we can, I want to make sure we have the information. I, I appreciate Mayor Proten um,'s point of wanting to make sure we have complete information, and I don't want to stand in the way of that. So if we can just, please make sure everyone be very specific so staff can get you that information, because if we just give them high-level things, we don't know if they give us enough. So just please make sure tell them exactly what you need so that we can then have that information to get it, get it done.
Yeah, I mean, on that point as well, I mean, the caps thing came up after our work session. I don't want anything else thrown into this at this point. We are gonna be looking at those three things. And nothing further at this point. If we need to readdress it later down the road, then we'll do so, but I don't want any more. ideas popping up, or we should try this, try this, try this. I, we stick to these things. We focus on them and have the clear cut ideas. And one, I mean, the one thing that's really getting me is we already had the work session. We already talked about setbacks. We talked about those things. Are, are we willing to actually discuss this as a possible change? Or are we just scared to make a decision?
I'm not changing any setbacks as far as my vote goes.
But are you willing to change zoning and was the appeal one of the three?
No, I think that the resolution that is on the table in front of us makes it very clear that it gives a process for the licensing authority to have to uphold a variance request when a variance request is submitted. I think that that's exactly what this done does, and it makes perfect sense. Now, again, we've got lots, there's lots of other strategies at this stuff. And I, I, I know a lot of folks say, well, there's not a whole lot of town, uh, land in town to do this stuff. We have a rezoning process in this town and I would, I would suggest that, you know, I don't know if folks have looked into that type of stuff or anything like that. But, you know, there's multiple processes here that can be followed. And again, I, I think with this particular ordinance, we just need to get it done to the point that the board of adjustments needs to uphold, or sorry, the licensing authority needs to uphold what the board of adjustments grants.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you have the full range spectrum here this evening. But there is a motion on the table.
There is a motion on the table.
It was stated to table it and table it means completely throw it out. We wanted to postpone for further discussion, not table, correct?
Yeah, yeah, it would be to a certain date. So we wouldn't be throwing it out.
The, the language you used was table, but it should be postponed till a date certain.
Okay.
Like to amend.
Sorry.
And, and what was the, to the next board meeting or the next work session? What was the?
I believe I said.
I want to, I want to, before we do, before.
For discussion, but we can't take action at a work session unless we want to do a special meeting. So we can.
Back to my question earlier, before, before Brian spoke and Brian had, had good information. Are we willing to have these conversations and actually have them?
I am pretty well set on the setbacks that we've already discussed. And I agree right with Brian on that, trustee Mason on that. One thing I would like to see is, I know it's thrown in after the fact is the caps. Because again, when you start getting rezoning, when we start getting annexation of more property in town, especially over on the west end, how they design all that. We can have a ton of dispensaries in this town. And is that what we're looking for? So I think we should be looking at caps too. But as far as the setbacks, I agree explicitly with trustee Mason. We need to have that.
But you're willing to have a discussion.
Uh, not on the setbacks.
So yes, on the caps, but no on the setbacks.
Okay.
So I think that's an overall yes on a.
Overall, yes. Overall, yes. Yes, for you.
Okay.
Right?
Yes, I'm willing to have a discussion. Mine is more to weigh what it would look like swapping out those setbacks for that licensure cap. If that's something I would love, and I really hope public comes to comment on that.
The other?
Yes. So if it's swapping out the, the number.
Either doing setbacks or having a cap.
But not both.
Well. So keeping, so the discussion of lowering those setbacks with the cap.
Okay. I'm just trying to give staff here options so they know.
I can email. It might be better if I email. I am willing to have the discussion though, to see what that would look like and the flexibility it offers our residents in their wanted protections, but also businesses wanting to open up here in Wellington.
Can I ask a question? At the last work session, we brought forward information on, on setbacks. And, and so one of the requests was provide information on setbacks and we provided information on reducing the, the, the school setbacks in particular. So I, I would need some guidance on what more that we could provide. Because I feel like we provided that information and got a rather clear answer. But perhaps trustee Teet says she's interested in, in looking, evaluating, uh, swapping out the setbacks for caps. So instead of reducing by distance, just saying a cap. I would appreciate email of some specifics. I, I think perhaps what would be helpful is if I was a board, if the goal is to have set, not have setbacks, but have caps, what is the number of marijuana dispensaries generally? I mean, cause we could have caps that are one per 15,000. That's a very easy cap. One per 15,000 residents, that, that's one, right? So we could swap out our existing setbacks for that. But if the goal is somewhere in the range of, you know, three to five dispensaries potentially, then perhaps staff could evaluate some different zoning kind of zoning setback options. So we could maybe provide some options that would meet the goals. Cause I'm not even totally clear right now what the, what the goal of the board is with the change or the change in setbacks. But again, if we move to a one in 15,000
Yeah.
Cap, we're not changing anything substantively. So, so I'm it would be helpful if we could get some goals here.
Yeah, and which setbacks, there's setbacks to many different things. So that's, it's very, that's very vague of change setbacks. So.
Basically we'd be looking at setbacks to public space. According to the public comment, right?
Yeah, but the major problem with the properties is not, well, from one property is public space, but for the majority of the other ones is schools and daycare. So, so that's so that's a I mean, you guys are talking about starting all over. So I, this is, this is a completely different conversation.
And that, that was my concern as we were presented information on, so I feel like we've gone through and have the setback. This is my concern now. And again, I'm happy to have conversation. I don't have a problem having conversation. I'll tell you personally, my stance on caps, I have, I would agree with trustee Mason. I, I am not supportive of caps, you know? In my view, that then becomes the government stepping in. Okay. When this was approved, there were setbacks that were approved, part of that with what was approved. What was not approved is you, the government then go and put an arbitrary cap because there's X number of people already here. Regardless of what I personally might think of any industry. I have issues from a property standpoint of saying, well, just because others of these industry exists, you can't have one. You know, the voters approved certain setbacks. My view is, okay, that's part of our job, the government is to look at those and say, okay, this is what we are supposed to enforce. Going beyond, so that's my personal, if we want to have that conversation, I'm happy to, but that's kind of where I stand on that. So again, I am also trying to understand what different, I mean, staff presented us with 1,500 foot setbacks from schools, thousand foot setbacks from schools. We had maps printed out. We had all of this given to us at the last meeting. We had conversation and the board overall had decided they did not want to. So I'm just trying to understand. I understand adding caps might change some of that, but I just don't want to keep having the same conversation repeatedly.
That's exactly where I am. All right. I think we've had enough discussion on it. Yeah. Roll call on the motion.
Do we need to amend to add the date certain for the, and two questions on that, because there was no date certain given, so we probably need to add one.
The next regular board meeting and work session.
Okay. The second question on that. That is February 14th. I don't know if that's going to be a problem for anyone. Okay.
Oh yeah, we're, we're already here on 14th.
Yes, we're here on the 14th.
We are here on the 14th and that's a regular
Regular meeting.
Not a work session. So you said next regular meeting. And work session or work session? I'm sorry. Do you can we do a work session before meeting? And commit to getting it done?
I don't know if that gives Dan enough time to look in, into this.
And I don't know.
Cap.
And if there's a work session immediately preceding the meeting, I don't know if that, if a decision, you know, if the goal's, board's desire was to amend the ordinance, I don't know if that gives me enough.
How much, how, realistically, how much time would you need to look into caps?
And if, if the board wants to have that, my concern is by the 14th, we can have information for the board. There's no problem with that. The issue is if, if there's a work session on the 14th, then there can't be a it can't be considered during, at the regular meeting immediately following that, because I wouldn't have enough time between that work session. If a change were desired to, to properly draft an ordinance.
Okay.
Um, cause I don't necessarily know what would come out of the work session.
One, that's my concern. One question I, I want to ask every board member here is if you were interested in caps. Changing caps versus the current ordinance. How it was proposed to us this evening, I don't believe is going to change anything. So if you're trying to do something with caps. I don't see it happening in a sense of changing what we're voting on. It's very agreed.
Agreed.
So if we're trying to look at caps because we don't like what's in front of us, you're not changing anything with caps. That's my opinion. Let's vote on it.
Okay. So the motion was to postpone this to the next regular meeting or work session, which would be February 14th, 2023. It was motion by Mayor Protem McDonald, seconded by trustee Teets. And roll call on the motion will be trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
We'll do that.
Okay.
And then the consent agenda item.
Now, uh, yes, consent agenda item that was moved to an action item is going to be resolution number three dash 2023. Proving town administrator's plan of his organization. Ms. Garcia.
You bet. So this is an item that is generally placed on your agenda after, after election. And it's every two years and is required 90 days after the election is done. I felt that because we had made a change from what you had seen and what I had presented to you back in May, that it was appropriate to bring that to you, um, just to let you know that a change had been made in the reporting structure to the town administrator. Cody, Cody Byrd, the planning director now reports to me. Kelly Hodling's chain of command remains the same. Um, that was just moved from her to me. She's working with a lot of newer and younger directors and managers and really spending a lot of time mentoring them. And I feel that that is one of her great skills that I don't want to lose out on, um, for her to be able to work with that group. And so bringing Cody under my, my charge just seemed to make sense. Most municipalities, the director of planning does report to the town administrator. And I stand to answer any questions.
Yes, Mayor, and I just want to get this over with because I don't want to.
Go for it.
I, I apologize, uh, Ms. Garcia. I meant to have this discussion with you at our last update. Um, but I, this is a great opportunity to bring it in front of the board as well, because I, I would like to ask direction or consideration that the next time you provide an org chart to the town board for consideration, we look at amending the town code or your job description to reflect you as a town manager instead of a town administrator. Because I believe that gives you a more reflective title of the authority and the responsibilities that you provide to the community. And I also want to support you in your future career development. And I think that would serve you well.
Thank you. We'll take a look at that. Thank you. You're welcome.
That, that's it. That's all I wanted. That's why I pulled it. Cause it, it says town administrator. I'd like for it to say town manager.
All right.
Simple enough. See, this was easy.
Any comments, any further comments from the board trustees?
Since this off, it is something I want to share with people. I think it's important. I appreciate that you have this on here, uh, Ms. Garcia. But if you look at the hierarchy, you see at the very top, this is the residents of Wellington. I think that's something that's very important that is not often talked about in government is that the board of trustees, we're not at the top that, that see the residents. So I appreciate our staff for making sure to put that in there. That's on.
Absolutely.
All right. Any public comments on this agenda? I have them. All right. May I get a motion in a second on this agenda item?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution number oh, three, 2023, a resolution approving the town administrator's plan of administrative organization.
Second.
May I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Onto, uh, reports. Mr. Sepienza.
No report at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia.
Um, just a quick follow-up. I mean, I believe Ms. Peacock is someone that talked about, um, how our website looks and the YouTube information and things like that. We'll get with Mahala and see if we can, what adjustments we can make to make it a little easier to find, um, for our residents. So wanted to let you know, we'll, we'll get on that right away.
Thank you. Staff communications. Mr. Byrd.
Evening, Mayor and Board. Cody Byrd, Planning Director. Um, I'll keep this brief because there was a report memo in your packet. This was something that we haven't done in years past, where we felt it was probably pretty important for you to kind of understand uh, some of the trends and numbers in our building, uh, department. So we did include, uh, some data, uh, it's aggregate from the last year, 2022, uh, permits issued, inspections performed. Inspections are primarily safe built, uh, through our contract. We do have a building official who goes out and performs some of those on a as needed basis, as well as providing oversight of the plan review process. Um, we include valuation information, which I think is an important trend, uh, to look at year to year. One of the things that we found is that our, our software that tracks this, um, not everything was entered consistently for years prior to our current staff. So some of the data was, that's why we don't have a three-year trend right now. Some of that data wasn't, uh, consistently tracked over time. So we're going to dig into that and see if we can't create even better reports in the future. But the, the trends are discernible. Um, a couple of things that I wanted to, to quickly highlight. You know, any given year, um, permits and evaluation trends are impacted by what's going on in the world around us. As the board is well aware, we have, uh, limited number of building permits the last couple of years. And you see that in the trend data for, for new home permits, I should clarify. And you see that in the data. Uh, last year we issued 82, uh, new residential home permits. We expect that to be pretty consistent with this year, although the, the economy is slowing down as well. And the valuations reflect the, the permit totals. A couple of things to highlight. We did have a pretty significant hail event in summer 2022 that had a, a pretty profound impact on the number of permits. We have two staff, uh, dedicated to, uh, building permits, uh, specifically. And they had quite an influx to deal with as well as additional contractor licensing. And answering questions, coordination and scheduling for all those different, uh, hail event, uh, permits. There was a valuation of nearly 25 million, um, for just the repairs to address the, the hail impacts. So that's a pretty significant change on an annual basis. Another highlight, uh, 2022 was a relative low year in terms of new commercial permits. We did have quite a few commercial remodels in progress, um, especially the Colorado, um, open for business, the main street program. Most of those permits were issued in the prior year and completed in 2022. So that doesn't really reflect on the, the 2020 year evaluations, but we recognize that that was a six, $650,000 valuation investment of our businesses in our main street program. The commercial valuation in 2022 was pretty high. Um, I think we've reported this board previously, there's industrial permits for our water and wastewater treatment buildings, uh, buildings only, not the equipment and processes and other things. But those, um, building valuations tended to boost that number up a little bit, even though there's no economic impact to the town from a permit standpoint. And then last, I wanted to kind of highlight some of the, um, the year-to-year trends, um, the perm, the new home permits retract. We did the valuation averages. So you can kind of see in 2022 or higher valuation than last year, 11 million of that was those commercial buildings for the town processes or for town water and wastewater treatment. But still a relatively good year, um, for overall valuation for the community. The last chart in this report shows the, uh, a three-year trend line for the number of available, uh, platted lots and the number of available lots that are ready to build on for permits. Um, and there's only 70 lots left in town. So our pipeline is getting a little bit narrow. To keep that open for, um, additional, um, permit revenues for paying our, our plant bonds. It'd be nice to see a few more, uh, developments with infrastructure in the ground to be permit ready. So that's the kind of our, our trend line in 2022 year in review, and I'll stand for any. So that's the kind of our our trend line in twenty twenty-two year in review, and I'll stand for any questions.
Trustee Wigan.
I got a question. Since I'm in the insurance industry, okay? On all on the hailstorm, how much money did Wellington make on permits on that? Just curious, do we?
I don't have that information for you tonight.
Approximately, do we get per permit like ten bucks, twenty bucks or whatever? I just just curious.
We didn't even analyze that, so I couldn't even hazard a guess. I can tell you that it's, you know, typically it's valuation basis.
We get a percentage or what? Of like at my house, I had thirty thousand dollars worth of damage.
Staff put out a memo on building valuations a month or so ago. I take another look at that. That explains a lot of detail on the. Permit calculation fees and the valuation basis.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Anybody else?
This report shows that you have been incredibly busy. So thank you very much. And and this is very impressive. So thank you very much.
Trustee Gator.
I just I appreciate the detail. I know we went over other stuff yesterday, but I really appreciate you taking time to put in stuff and actually show us where things are going and trending. So much appreciated.
Thank you.
Trustee Teets.
Thank you for this. Just it's awesome in general to have it in front of us. One thing that does concern me is you look at the year-to-date permit total comparison. And you look at how many commercial new build permits there were, and there was eight, correct? Was that some of the town too?
Yeah, so thank you for bringing that up. I'm sorry, I meant to mention that. Just a caveat in how we're reporting this. The the reports that we run out of our software system just includes commercial. And so there's remodels, alterations. There's a lot of things that commercial projects are are permitted. But what we did was we deciphered out what were new commercial, meaning a new construction project or a tenant finish that resulted in a new business. So for twenty twenty-two, you can see that there are eight permits, eleven of those commercial permits, seven of those commercial permits were were. Town water and wastewater buildings, and those are separate permits. So yes, there was one new commercial permit. That resulted in a new business or a new tenant finish. There weren't not in this data, but there were a couple of other. New businesses that that opened in town this year. They just didn't require any permits to move into those spaces. Many of them were already permit ready. So we had we had new business growth. We had new businesses coming to town and located in town, but not all of them required permits. So it's not a one-to-one comparison of those numbers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is some of the commercial permitting subject to the moratorium or the restriction because of the water?
We don't have a moratorium and no commercial permits have been denied based on water capacity.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bird.
Thank you.
All right, on to board reports. I'm going to start this one off. I didn't really know how to bring this up, where to bring this up. So the vote that I placed on December thirteenth for Board of Adjustments placement was influenced. By information I got before and then during the meeting, which was then blown to pieces the next day. One of the emails that I received was from Trustee Teets stating that the Chair of the Board. Was stressing concerned about how the item was being handled. And so the next day after the vote, I called him and I asked him how he thought the vote had gone. And he's like, I don't, I don't know what you're talking about. I was like, so were you concerned about what was going on last night? Did you know about what was going on last night? He was so confused that he didn't really know what to say. So I sent him the email and asked him if he had talked to anybody. About that vote that was coming up. And his response was. Hi, Kayler. I have never said anything to anyone about this. I don't know anyone on this message. I also don't talk to really anyone in the town of Wellington. Not sure who Megan is. Levi, I have only met twice at the last two meetings and I've never talked outside of the board. I've never talked to Trustee Sherrell. Sorry, I'm super confused on this whole thing. Please let me know if there's anything else I can help you out with. So I don't know if the information of the Chair of the Board being concerned about it was a mistake. Or a lie. I don't know what to do with it.
So in my email, did it say Chair of the Board of Adjustments?
Yes.
I will have to look at that, but yeah, I don't remember stating Chair of Board of Adjustments, but I will.
Said the Chair of the BOA. So that was that was my concern. It was upsetting, to say the least, and it's it's not. Fun bringing this up, but I wanted everybody to be aware of. Of what went down. So there you have it.
Mayor, and I thank you, and I will look at it. And if I did anything wrong, I am more than happy to admit if I mistype. I have not spoken with the Chair of the Board of Adjustments. I did speak with someone who was sitting in a position on the Board of Adjustments. And that was Levi.
Thank you. Okay, on to greener pastures. Solid waste council update. Trustee Daly.
Greener pastures. Let's talk about solid waste. Okay, so. The the major thing I wanted to talk about today was that. In in recent past, Laramo County put out a PRF essentially looking for a partner. That would design, build and operate the tier-one projects for Laramo County. Including the transfer station and the landfill, the north landfill, the one that will be north of Wellington. And since then, they had preliminary chosen Republic. As their partner. And on January twenty-fourth, at that meeting, the commissioners did vote. To enter into negotiations with Republic. So. They are now actively negotiating a contract for that purpose.
With Republic.
With Republic. With that said, I see some potential. And also some major concerns with this. The major thing that is concerning is that our IGA is with Laramo County and other surrounding communities. It is not with Republic Services. So. The agreement that we currently have does not extend to that company. But the benefits that I potentially see is that now that we are in these negotiations, by we, I mean Laramo County is in negotiations with Republic Services. That within that contract, potentially, if we have a voice there, we could include items. And 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 suggest that items are included within that contract that do represent the voice of Wellington. And some of our concerns and questions and make sure that those are protected. Keep in mind, this contract will be for more than one hundred years. It'll be for the lifespan of this new landfill, which will likely be a hundred, a hundred and seventy-plus years contract. So that that is what is before us at this point. I did get communication today, actually, from Laramo County. I haven't told anybody in staff this yet, but I'm so sorry. I just got it right before I got here. I asked for what the timeline was expected for this, and they said within two to three months is when they're expected to give their first draft contract to Republic. And they gave me the timeline of two to three weeks to provide recommendations. To them. As to what we would like to be included within those initial drafts. That does not give us a lot of time from this board perspective to have a consolidated effort to provide those recommendations. From the the perspective of the Policy Council, which I sit on through that IGA. We know there was no vote to recommend to go into negotiations with Republic. We did not, they did not even take it to a vote, but through that conversation, nobody was in favor to go and enter into negotiations with Republic. What vote did occur is if negotiations were to occur, that we insisted that they utilize TAC, the Technical Advisory Board. To draft and provide feedback on the contract. Because that technical board has not been utilized necessarily to provide a lot of that feedback. I have considerable trust in both Director Cody Byrd, who sits in on TAC on behalf of Wellington. And very talented staff on behalf of all the other communities involved. And they have brought a lot of similar concerns and questions on behalf of their communities, which are very diverse and different than Wellington's. But there is brilliance within that group, and I trust that that group, if they are. Allowed to advise appropriately, would really represent those communities. So with that said, we do have a shortlist right now of major concerns for Wellington. Those are the items I brought to you before. Major ones include pollution, blowing trash. And and other pollution-based things of, you know, being within a certain vicinity of a landfill. The other ones are, the other major one is based on traffic. There'll be hauler trucks that are taking trash. That are pretty much. All trash trucks will be going to, not all, this is, that'll be number three item. All trash trucks will be going to the transfer station. They'll essentially be packing that down, putting them on to giant trucks that are then. Trucking all that from South Fort Collins, where the current landfill is, all the way up north to the new landfill. Those are giant trucks, and we don't want those coming anywhere near Wellington and anywhere through Wellington. The most clear direct route is through on County Road Nine. Previously, those routes have always gone on I twenty-five with backup routes that looked like a long taffhill. But those were defined in very old plans and not things that are in current contracts. So those are items that we'd want to very clearly define what those routes would have to be contractually. That's something that we would have really want to insist on. And then the third item that's really important to me. And there's many more technical items, but these are the ones like that I I've really been insisting on. Are is it called a direct hauler line? So let's say there is a trash truck that's serving Wellington. Dumpster divers, for example, and they are only serving, their route only goes through Wellington. Would it make sense for that truck then to drive all the way to South Fort Collins for then all that trash to then go to the to the other landfill? The idea was as there would be this imaginary dotted line, that if a truck was only serving above that dotted line, then that truck could go directly to the north landfill. Versus go south. That line and the definition of that line, we think should be contractually defined. So that's one of the things. The other item is would people who live north be able to privately utilize the new landfill? The answer right now is no. That doesn't make any sense in my mind. We have a convenience center where it can only take bagged trash. We already have a convenience center that. Currently doesn't support our needs. That's the other thing that I think is important to Wellington. So we we have a list of items that we think are important. Above and beyond that, there's a lot of other major concerns. There's volume caps and limits on this, but what does that mean exactly? Cody is very much smarter in those areas than I. And then again, with the other people on this technical committee. So. What essentially I'm asking here is we're working on a very short time schedule to get some recommendations and concerns. To the county commissioners to ensure that they are acknowledged and defined within the early contract negotiations. What I'm hoping is that with your. With your approval, I'm not saying like formal approval, but would you guys give us permission to speak on behalf of Wellington? I mean, that's the role that I've been appointed to, but I'm not going to have time essentially to come back and say, here's a very concise, clear list of exactly what we're asking for. But here's the themes and the purpose behind what we want to do and accomplish. I have no idea exactly how they're going to write into the contract anyway. So these are the goals of what we're trying to accomplish, and I'm going to be speaking on behalf of Wellington. That's my role as a liaison, but I just want to get your. Yeah, I just want to make sure that I'm I'm doing what you guys want me to do and and I'm.
Trustee Gator.
Yeah, so my suggestion would be, and I agree, three weeks is not good. We can have a lot of stuff when you do on the fourteenth now. Is my recommendation would be any of us that have things that we think should be, and they reach out to either Trustee Daly or Trustee Daly and Mr. Bird, since he sits on the, are you on the TAC as well or just Mr.?
No, I'm not technical. I'm policy, policy counsel.
Okay, but yeah, to communicate that to Trustee Daly as our liaison and Mr. Bird, and the two of them can try to consolidate that down into common themes or whatever. And then I have no problem entrusting the two of them to basically take our thoughts and ideas. That way we can just give it straight to them. And then they can then take that to the TAC and get it into the contract. That would be my thought process.
I have one question. So the presentation that was brought before the town of Wellington and the people in the surrounding county. That were going to be affected, that got the notices sent out, all of that information, so all of that direction of traffic and everything like that is Xed out. And this new contract negotiation?
I don't know that. I don't know the answers, unfortunately, because the contract hasn't been drafted. There's no real, I don't know. So the the draft contract will be available. The PRF is public document. I can send that to you so you can see what they were. They responded to, Republic was responding to, but you know, what will actually be the final contract? That's essentially what they're drafting right now and negotiating. So I'm, I don't know. But but, oh, the other piece of it too is we've been insisting from Wellington for more public relations, more communication, more. What's going on? Because it comes in waves where people are like, wait, a landfill is coming, you know, like, no, shut it down. Whoa, we're years past that. So but the the panic that comes in those waves as people hear about it could be negated if we were doing better communication. And by we, I mean it's the county facility. So how can we help them to facilitate that? So that's another thing that we've been insisting on and asking for. So that's another thing we would ask for in this contract, because that would be the responsibility of Republic. Another thing I have concern for is, you know, who are they going to employ and how? I just think that's another thing that I'm personally interested in, but.
Would you mind sending around your bullet points? Yeah, that you mentioned this evening about. Yeah, because I have a couple of thoughts that like popped up along the way.
Yeah, I'd love to take your feedback, and if I can either consolidate those within the items that I have or see like. Talk to you guys more about your concerns or questions. I think that would be great. And again, I mean, we're essentially just providing the recommendations or goals or ideas or themes. And then the technical committee is who's going to make that magic happen and defend those items within the actual contract. And and so we're going to be relying on them to do that and the county to uphold those concerns and questions. So and then we'll be seeing the that, you know, the tentative timeline I'm seeing is that we'll be seeing the contract, the draft contract. In front of the Policy Council within two to three months. So.
So get you your feedback and comments in like the next week or two.
Yes, please.
Great. Yeah, excuse me. So it's, we need to respond. We need to provide this in two weeks. Is that what you said?
Lori asked for two to three weeks to give her. Our our priorities.
Okay, fabulous. If you could include me on your emails, I'm, I've been in contact with Lorinda Volker, the county manager, trying to. Provide some information, give her some cues, but she's not. So if you can just include me, that would be really helpful.
And I got the email like an hour ago, and I've been at a school meeting right before.
Oh, no complaints whatsoever. I understand. No worries. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, and I have other updates if you want them. They're not pleasant.
Go for it. Make it, make it, make it.
Okay.
As quick as possible.
Okay, I attended the State of the Youth, the first of two meetings. With the Pooter School District, and I think maybe a hundred, a hundred and fifty other brilliant minds in northern Colorado who represent. Pretty much every organization that serve youth or. It was completely overwhelming and a lot of youth who were very vulnerable to share their stories. So the goal of this group is to. Do these four items, create more safe spaces for youth centered on belonging, training to support mental health for our youth. Through items like self-regulation and coping techniques, awareness of mental health resources available to students. Awareness and mental health resources available to students and additional mental health professionals. The reason why this is a priority, I'm just going to list off some statistics. These are for Pooter School District. This is not the country. This is not the state. This is for our school district. The percentage of students who felt so, this percentage of students who purposely hurt themselves without wanting to die in the last twelve months. Female, thirty-three percent. These are high school students. Male, fifteen percent. Queer, non-binary, sixty-nine percent. These are two thousand twenty-one stats. Two thousand twenty-two stats have shown increases. The percentage of students who have seriously considered attempting suicide during the past twelve months. Female, twenty-four percent. One of four. Queer and non-binary, fifty-five percent. Sorry. It's, it was extremely shocking. And there's another one on kids who have made plans. These are questions that are asked. Non-heterosexual, this group is actually the most major category of, of kids now. It's not actually based on race anymore. It's not necessarily like Hispanic versus non-Hispanic. It's heterosexual versus non-heterosexual. So these are really major concerns. The group I was part of was talking about finding better ways to have coping techniques and regulation and how kids can learn these. Because methods of doing that and finding adults who can help them are not available. Finding therapists and getting appointments take about six months, even if you have insurance. So they provided all these statistics. So having kids being able to help other kids is actually the solution. So a lot of those things included, including or creating actually spaces where kids can gather. These happen to be part of our strategic plan. You know, creating gathering spaces. A lot of them align with things that we're doing or want to do. So I want to bring a lot of that stuff back to us. And there are some things that we can do immediately, and I'm actually working the community to make happen. And I might bring back for maybe consideration for discretionary funds. But it was horrible. But we're going back next week for a solution, so it is one of my
Trusty Gator.
I can get to the right page here. All right, so I did want to share with you guys, I told you last week or two weeks ago, on the Finance Committee was working on a letter that they wanted to share with the Board of Trustees. So I am going to read this letter to you guys. And I, the only thing I'm going to add to this is the preface is this is not my letter. This is something that was created, it was drafted by a member of the Finance Committee. They all collaborated to make adjustments and changes, switch wording, switch this, say that. And so that was it. So this is from our Finance Committee. January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, Town of Wellington Board of Trustees. An effective system of internal financial controls is necessary for the proper management of taxpayer funds, as well as ensuring that financial reports are complete and accurate. In alignment with the Board of Trustees' goals to ma-, goal to maximize financial transparency to the citizens of Wellington, the Finance Committee supports ongoing efforts to devise an internal controls framework to ensure proper management and accounting of financial resources. Given our town's current constraints on personnel and resources, not every conceivable internal control can be implemented. The purpose of this framework is not to mandate all feasible internal controls, but to develop a cost-efficient structure that alleviates the most significant financial risks to the town. The Finance Committee encourages efforts made by town staff to demonstrate a commitment to integrity and ethical values that not only align with our Board of Trustees' strategic plan, but also to the ethos of great character woven into the fabric of our community. We support the implementation of effective and cost-conscious controls and oversight functions to our processes surrounding cash collection, billing and receivables, vendor management, and other areas that impact the town's financial position. This committee supports our Finance Director's efforts to establish structure, authority, and responsibility delegated amongst the various town staff that impact financial controls and risk management. We believe in the competence and character of our staff and will support their initiatives surrounding risk management to the best of our abilities. The Town of Wellington is responsible and accountable to its taxpayers to establish an environment where citizens can be confident that funds are being managed properly. We support the staff's efforts to assess all town operations to identify risks and create controls and oversight to mitigate those risks. Our goal is to develop awareness and expertise around the necessity of such controls, understand where targeted efforts can have the greatest mitigating impact, train staff on new procedures, and to monitor and oversee results of said controls to ensure that our framework continues to iterate and improve. Town of Wellington Finance Committee, January ninth, twenty-twenty-three. So just the, really our staff has been doing a great job and working in this goal. And this is not something that just started. This has been a multi-year process. And so this was first brought up when Kelly was our interim, and it has continued with Ms. Garcia. So just my kudos to staff for the great work that you're doing. And we've got a competent set of financial professionals who are seeing what you as staff are doing, and they really appreciate and keep up the good work. So the only other thing I have is, what is today, Tuesday? Tomorrow, Mrs. Garcia and I are going to be having our meeting with an individual from CSU to talk a little bit about the transportation study. So get some, talk with them, talk a little bit about what, where we go from there. And then hopefully be bringing back some updates to you guys for that in February and where we go from there.
The only really thing I have is I was scrolling through Facebook today and saw that this Saturday from one to five PM, Sparge here in town is hosting a silent auction. And all of those benefits go to our senior citizen, our senior resource center. So I thought that was kind of cool. I'm going to go snag a peek and see if I can't find something and raise funds for them.
Chris Wigan.
Yes, Laramo County Behavioral Health. Ms. Stolen is scheduled to speak, give a presentation in front of us. What is it, the last meeting in February, I believe? Is that right?
You know, you're asking and I'm not
Somewhere around there, okay? And the neat thing, it goes right in with what you're talking about, Trusty Daly. You know, they look at definitely mental health, and they're completing the campus down there for the main building, and they're actually looking at a youth facility down there too. So they understand it's a huge problem. And I've been a business member with realities for children for twenty-some odd years. I've seen this over and over again. It affects everybody, you know, you, you think this is such a pristine area, that we got a dark underbelly, big time. So, yeah, there's problems and you'll thank God we're doing things hopefully to combat some of that.
March twenty-eighth.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Ten.
Yes, just a, a quick comment. Doesn't happen very often, but a citizen reached out and asked if I would be willing to use my voice. And I said absolutely, once they shared their concern. Although our public safety partners are very, very important to the community. We contract with the Sheriff's Office to provide our police services, and we are very fortunate enough to have our very own local fire district in our community. However, it has recently come to my attention that they have hired twelve part-time employees from Pooter Fire Authority, which is the underlying tone of either consolidation or the degradation of our beloved Fire Protection District. So just a request from a citizen for a call to action, for people to get involved, participate in your local boards, understand how they work, knowing your elections are. And if you're passionate about your own local public safety partners, have a voice. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. We can adjourn and go to the work session. All in favor, say aye. Aye, let's do a five-minute recess.
Yeah, I had an initial question about this, but we just talked about what's going on in March twenty-eight.
Send a email to the mayor. That way the mayor and I, the mayor and I talk on Thursday through the evenings, we meet every Thursday evening to talk about agenda items, things like that. We generally I don't know, we generally don't do that. Generally, I mean, but let me, let me think it through.
Yeah, I want to follow.
Because if we have in other locations, I've worked at a chat industry, as far as we've had, we've had others. I mean, it's not just, it's like been a whole panel.
I understand.
So let me, let me think.
Longer than three minutes.
I understand. Let me, let me see, let me think, let me think about it tonight. Okay, yeah. You are okay.
All the
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, we'll begin the work session. There we go. Mr. Bird will be presenting the zoning map.
Good evening, again, yes, it's a draft. I think we put some nice ugly watermarks on all of our, all of our maps. Um, good evening, Cody Bird, planning director. Um, appreciate the opportunity to come, uh, before the board in this work session to discuss the potential changes to the town's official zoning map. Um, I did present some information, uh, to the board as, as a presentation, uh, in December. Um, immediately following the planning commission's consideration of the official zoning map, and I highlighted a lot of the information there. I don't want to purposely recreate or re-explain all that information, but I'm absolutely happy to answer any questions, provide any, any clarifying remarks on that. A lot of the highlights of that presentation are also in the written staff memo. Um, and just a couple of those highlights that were, um, were pretty important in the conversation for the zoning map was, uh, the, how to handle the transitional zone properties. Our current map and our old zoning, our old land use code had the transitional zone district. And it required any new use to have a conditional use approval, which is a public hearing process that adds time and uncertainty to, um, a- a- any kind of proposal, whether it's the property owner, a neighbor, a potential purchaser, there was just no clarity as to what those properties were supposed to do. What was allowed and not allowed, and everything was subjective. And so through the course of the land use code conversation, it was decided to eliminate the transitional zone district, yet we have all these properties that are zone transitional. And the zone doesn't exist anymore, so we need to update the map to provide that clarity. Um, a large number of those transitional zone properties are located along Harrison Avenue and McKinley Avenue, close to the downtown. Um, conversations initially during the conference of plan, uh, outreach had indicated that there was a desire to allow, uh, the commercial downtown to grow into those, um, those side streets. And the initial, uh, information, once we presented it, got a lot of immediate pushback from the residents that that would impact. Um, and so there were, uh, quite a few conversations. I can't tell you how many coffees I drank, uh, talking with, with homeowners, uh, trying to understand that. Um, particular nuance. And ultimately, the, the land use code added, after all that comment, added a new zone district that didn't exist before, which was our R four zoning. Um, which is specific to the downtown, uh, residential downtown neighborhoods. Um, so we add a new zone district to specifically address that concern. The Board of Trustees also adopted a resolution, I forgot the date of it, but, um, immediately following, believe this board's, uh, election, there was a resolution presented, kind of adhering to, uh, remembering that, that moment that, that we had a lot of residents concerned with these two particular side streets. Um, and so I'm happy to report that, uh, everyone's listening to that. Planning Commission has considered all of those concerns. And this draft map in front of you, um, identifies the properties along Harrison Avenue and McKinley Avenue as R four downtown neighborhoods. Um, to be reflective of the public comments that we heard. Um, there are a number of other, uh, changes, um, most of them are pretty minor. Um, including, um, a lot of properties were, uh, changing zoning by title only. We have a lot of our town homes and condominium associations that were previously, or on our, on our current map are identified as, um, R four. And since I just described R four as now downtown neighborhoods, we reassigned those by title only to R three. Most of the changes for setbacks, densities, other things like that, didn't really change what was already on those existing sites. We did notify all those property owners that there is a change in title to your zoning, we sent them letters, um, so we're trying everything we can to just be completely transparent. Um, and then the other significant, uh, changes were some of the other properties that were zone transitional. Um, along, um, West First Street, um, near Meridian Trust subdivision, uh, along Sixth Street and a few kind of satellite sites. Planning Commission took a close look at each one of those and evaluated what's there now, what's surrounding it, what makes sense for the, what's existing in, in the long range future of the town. And those recommendations are from the planning commission are reflected on this, uh, draft map in front of you. Um, so those were some of the, the considerations, um, that were highlighted. I didn't dive into everything. If you have questions, I'm happy to, uh, to dive into any of the details that you'd like. Um, I do want to highlight a couple of things that came up from the planning commission public hearing. Um, on this draft map, it stood, it's dated December fifth, because that's when the planning commission connected their public hearing. And this, when these changes were, were, uh, recommended by the planning commission. But there's keynotes on this map with, uh, uh, in the legend with an, an A and a B. Um, letter A, there were two property owners that have, um, existing residential properties on Sixth Street. And they came to the planning commission public hearing and said, um, the, the draft map, the planning commission was considering at that time, identified those properties as C one community commercial. Cause they're located along Sixth Street, generally an arterial, it's an arterial corridor, it's generally commercial. And the planning commission said, well, this makes sense to be commercial. It's two property owners said, we don't really agree with that. We'd like it to stay residential. Planning Commission considered that, said, that seems reasonable, R four makes sense, because it's adjacent to other R four. Their existing residential and the, and the homeowners are making that request. And so that was the planning commission's recommendation, was those two property owners. Planning Commission recommended those be zoned R four. Adjacent to those two properties, there was another property in the same block, and the two, uh, owners that were at the public hearing said, we'd also like to speak for our, our neighbor who wasn't able to make it, he would also like R four. And the planning commission said, well, we're not really able to consider that, because he's not here to speak for himself. But authorized staff to reach out to him and ask the question of the property owner. Um, planning commission said, we're okay with C one or R four, because those were the two zone districts that they were considering. We reached out to that property owner, he responded, he said, I don't like R four, I like C one. And C one was consistent with the planning commission's initial considerations, so that's what we're reflecting on your map tonight. Um, there was one other property owner who wasn't able to make it, he sent staff a letter, um, with a request, uh, to present to the planning commission. It's for the property on Second Street, Second and Harrison, behind Papa's table. He said, you, the draft map, the planning commission was considering, had identified that property as R four downtown neighborhoods. He said, we bought that property for, as a, as a commercial investment, transitionals are commercial zone district. We're on a side street that, that, um, would support commercial next to the downtown. We want to keep a commercial zone category. Planning Commission evaluated that, said, we think that makes sense, C two downtown core, um, is adjacent. And makes sense on that side street. So that was the planning commission's recommendation, was to consider that, that owner's request and zone that property. Um, or commercial C two downtown. Um, so those are the highlights. I wanted to explain those, those nuances there. Planning Commission did have specific feedback. Um, since that time, town staff has also heard from a property owner, um, with a transitional zone property, uh, along County Road nine. Uh, Byron White Street Road, I guess Byron, Byron White Road is what it's named. Um, and it's shown on your map here as C one community commercial. Um, he has made the request to staff to bring it to the attention of the planning commission and the board, that they would like to also have considered C three. Um, mixed use commercials zoning for that particular property. Um, we have not committed to anything there, but we've answered a lot of questions, provided a lot of information to that owner. And agreed that we would at least make sure that the board and the planning commission were aware, um, of that particular, uh, property and his desire as the property owner. The last thing I wanted to, um, to highlight, and then I'll, I'll stand for, for questions and allow some discussion. Um, after the planning commission made its recommendation, and which is reflected on the map in front of you. Um, the, uh, one or two of the commissioners also brought up a question, um, at the January meeting. The question was related to uh, public properties and what was the methodology for those? Um, when the draft map was being prepared, um, nothing in the, in the land use code really addressed or changed the way the public district was being considered. And so there weren't any proposed changes on the map to reflect that point was brought up. We've got a lot of inconsistencies around town. Some of the properties that didn't have zoning before are now being zoned similar to the adjacent residential neighborhoods. Others are maintaining that public zone category. There's, it seemed to the planning commission that, that this was an inconsistency across town. And they asked for staff to do some additional research and present our findings, um, at a future work session. So the planning commission asked that work session to happen in Fabu- February, February, um, February sixth is when we have that scheduled for a work session. So, planning commission's just looking for more information on how we've handled those properties throughout town over time. What are the significant differences from one site to another? And asked for staff to dig into that. We'll be presenting that. I don't have the information tonight, because we're still diving in. Um, but I wanted to bring it to your attention that that question came from the planning commission for some additional consideration. They may want to make a change to the recommendation based on their discussion and findings. I'll stand for any questions. That was a mouthful. I said I'd be brief and I wasn't, um, but this, this is your time, so, um, happy to answer questions and allow some discussion.
Uh, trustee Gaden. I'll let you get to your seat first. Um, so the first question is, is I know in trying to review this, is it possible that, I don't know if, I know this is not like not a final document, but to have some versions of this easier to actually zoom in and not lose the resolution. Um, so I appreciate you blew this up, so it's easier to see, but it's still hard to like actually make out what is what, just because of I am partially colorblind, so trying to differentiate some of these colors is difficult. Um, so I don't know if it's just, if it's possible to have a I, yeah, I, 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 um, so. Oh, I've done that. Um, so if it was possible to have just like some digital version that we can just actually like zoom in to look at specific areas with closer detail, it's just hard, because when I zoom in on the computer, it just blurs out and I can't actually see anything. Um, so that would be one quest, if we can, if we can, great, if we can't, we can't. Um, I, if I recall correctly, we had an individual come and speak at public comments about his property potentially being rezoned. And I believe it was one of the storage is on Cleveland Avenue. And I didn't know if that, I didn't see that in the notes anywhere that you had included, but I didn't know if that had been addressed, or if that was still an outstanding concern.
Yeah, and, and my apologies, because I forgot that he had come to, um, one of the, the meetings here, he got, he came to the presentation, um,
Okay.
For this board. That's the individual that I had referenced that reached out to staff and had questions about their property on, uh, County Road nine. It is.
Oh, okay.
Yes, and so that was the one I was referring to.
Okay.
We've also encouraged him to come back for the, the public hearings. That, that's obviously his opportunity to speak in front of the board and the planning commission both. Um, that, um, we've, we have received a written request from him to
Okay.
Bring that to your attention. So following through on that, but it's the same property.
So which, when I'm looking at this map, sorry, that's why I'm like, I'm trying to like, I don't know where Byron White Street is. Okay, up by the high school?
It's, yeah, it's.
Got it.
It's the, it's, it's cannonball storage, um, and he, he represented that in, in the meeting.
Got it. Okay, so that was the request to go from C one to C three, because his storage would be an allowed use under the C three. Which, but it wouldn't be under C one.
That, that was his request to consider C three, so yes.
And what is, he's currently zone transitional?
Mm-hmm.
Got it, okay.
Yes, sir.
Um, were there any other zones other than transitional that we changed, uh, other than, rather than just like an in-like, right? It, it, R three became R four or whatever. Was there any other areas where we actually changed the zoning from something, whether it was one form of commercial to a different form of commercial? Could you highlight if there were any areas that we adjusted that?
Uh, yes, and, and yes, the short answer was there were some properties. Um, the planning commission took a, a very, the, the, the initial, um, review was which properties do we have to do something with because of transitional zoning and, um, it, it turned into, well, let's make sure that, that we're not, we don't do this exercise very often. Let's make sure we've thought about everything. And so there were a number of properties, um, it's a limited number, it was a, I forget the number, but it was a handful. Um, that already have an existing, uh, zoning that they had recommended something different. Um, primarily those properties were, um, along Cleveland Avenue, um, there's, um, uh, storage uses along there that are, um, currently zoned. Some of those are zone transitional, they're recommended for C three zoning. Um, one of them was zoned light industrial, um, the planning commission recommended, that doesn't really fit in that area when we recommend C three for everything else. Let's make sure that that's zoned consistently with the surrounding properties. Um, there were a couple of properties that didn't have any zoning designation, um, some of those were large vacant parcels. And the planning commission recommended those be zoned ag, uh, agricultural. Um, sorry, I wasn't, I'm not, I wasn't really prepared for that question, but it's a great question. Um, there was one other property that was, um, it's their, their town homes on Wellington Boulevard, um, that were, uh, previously zoned, um, C three. And there's an existing established use on those now town homes, so the, the recommendation is to change it to R three consistent with the, uh, multifamily densities and single family attached densities. Um, so that was another one. Um, if I think of others, I'll bring them up, I'll, but I, I'll, I'll keep kind of combing the map and make sure.
Well, what you could do too is if you could just, because again, this will be coming back to us, it's a later point for an actual adoption. If you could maybe just put together an email of those specific ones that we were changing from one to another, and just give that out in email at some point, that would be awesome.
Thank you.
Trustee Teets. Yes, so, um, back to the focus on the County Road nine, the two parcels on the Brian White. So the both C one zonings, um, that one I know, because I have had some discussions. The C three zoning, the reason why that request is there is because of the fact that an existing storage unit facility sits on that property. If you were to rezone it to C one, and he were to ever to want to resell that property, he could not sell it as a storage facility.
That's not true, but I can, I'm happy to provide clarification if that's.
Okay, awesome, no, I'm, I'm happy to hear.
I'll, I'll dive into it. Um, so the, the comment, um, as I understood it, and, and I'm listening and thinking, so if I'm, if I misheard, correct me. What I heard was that if the owner sells the property, that they wouldn't be able, the new purchaser wouldn't be able to continue that use. And that's not true, the, a change of ownership does not affect the change of use on an existing site.
On that one, I believe the concern was a loss of property would not be able to be rebuilt. It was what he brought to the board. Is that concern?
And that, and we've, we spoke to that during the last board meeting as well. We have an entire article in the land use code on non-conforming uses, non-conforming structures, non-conforming lots. Um, protections in that Article seven, uh, of the land use code include, um, the ability to, to modify, repair, um, to rebuild. Um, there is a threshold over which, if the structure is so, so damaged that it, it can't be rebuilt. Um, for instance, if insurance won't cover a rebuild, um, that the, the structure can then only be brought into compliance with the the new standards. Typically, that's a setback. Um, sometimes it's, you know, sometimes it's you can rebuild the, and keep the, the existing use on site, but you need to construct the building in, in conformance with the current regulations. Um, we did also, in speaking with the individual of, of the particular property, um, we did some additional research on, on the specifics of their approvals, and what we found was that that property in particular, um, not every property in town, but this property in particular, because it was zoned transitional at the time of development, the owner had to obtain a conditional use approval. A conditional use approval was granted by the town to construct the storage warehouses, open storage and maintain the existing, um, what was then a residential farmhouse for an office purpose for that particular site. A conditional use approval runs with the land, um, it supersedes, uh, change in zoning, so that conditional use is the allowed use for that property until something else changes or a new request is made.
So it's grandfathered in, basically, is the layman's terms?
I really dislike the term grandfather, it's not defined anywhere in any of our codes, so I try really hard not to use it. I try to use legal non-conforming use, which is the Article seven. And the short answer is yes, but the, the, the more technical answer is that the, the original conditions of approval attached with the conditional use grant is what governs the use on that site.
So, and the one thing I think that I, if I'm understanding correctly, so like, with a typical, I think it's fifty percent is a threshold, so, uh, for example, I have a residential house on a C two. C two, I don't know, c- commercial property, right? That's not, that's not an allowed use.
I believe.
Um, so if my house, yeah, I'm C two, so if my house were to burn forty-eight percent, it would fall under the ability to rebuild and things like that. If it were to burn completely to ground, at that point, it would not be, I would not be able to rebuild a residence on that property, based on what the code says. But in his case, because he has a conditional use permit that says he can do storage, even if he were to suffer a full loss, because of the conditional use permit, he would still be allowed to rebuild the storage, even if it built a hundred percent.
Correct.
So in his case, because of that conditional use, as long as he doesn't remove that, he's protected as long as he doesn't. Now, if he changes to a different use, if it were to switch to a different zoning, then that would be an issue, but as long as he just continues that use, and it doesn't matter if someone else buys it or sells it, if it burns to the ground, they can still rebuild it, because they have that conditional use permit. And so that, that is separate. If it burns to the ground, they can still rebuild it because they have that conditional use permit. And so that, that is separate from the whole. You had this use and as long as it's only percentage. So he's in a different situation.
And that, uh, that conditional use, that's transferable from sale?
The, yes. So, um, sorry, I was using some technical language. Um, when we, in, in real estate, when we say that the. Um, the conditional use runs with the land. It means that regardless of ownership, ownership can change any number of times. But what the town approved for that particular piece of property is, is identified very clearly in an ordinance adopted by the town that says, we understand what you're proposing. We've seen the site plan and we agree that's an acceptable use. There's, there are a few conditions attached to the type, the, the manner in which they develop some site standards. Um, as conditions, but that's the governing document for that particular property. And real quick, because I, I know you had other comments. I want to come back. I just wanted to clarify too. There, there were some specific provisions added to article seven related to a couple of particular uses in, uh, a couple of zone districts. Um, so, and, and those were directly based on feedback from public comments during the land use code process. Um, so I just wanted to highlight that there were a couple of changes made to the standard language to specifically address. I think it was religious land uses and, and I believe residential.
I think residential, as I said, it's like, you're right. And we did have that. So.
Yeah. So I, there were some additional considerations given by this board in that process to make sure that some of those, um, protections were in place.
Got it. So just, just to understand, um, when they were discussing, because that was my second stem off of the question was the property damage. When they go to rebuild that property damage, the property as it sits now is not within the required setbacks. Of what this, the new update to the land use code would be, which means if his.
I'm, I'm not sure if that's correct. I haven't actually researched the setbacks for that property.
Got it. So say they were, got it. Say they were as an example, not within, say his storage units were set closer to the road than what the new code would allow for. Would he have to come into alliance with that? If he were to live, lose fifty percent of his property? Or does that conditional use still align?
The conditional use had a, an approved site or it was conceptual site plan that identified locations, property boundaries and other things. We'd have to evaluate that specific conditional use grant and the regulations in place at the time. Um, but generally speaking, if there's a prior approval, that's going to govern over just a legislative act.
Awesome.
Thanks for the questions.
Cody, I want to thank you for all the hard work you did on this. I finally kind of understand a lot of it now. And you really did do a lot of clarification. So I really appreciate that. And, um, plus the questions that have been asked here. And I think that's kind of offset any of the questions that I had too. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Reagan.
No, Cody, I'd just say, uh, uh, give our thanks to the, uh, planning commission, uh, you know, getting out there and listening to the residents as far as, uh, some of these changes. I, I, I know everybody really appreciates that. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee.
So Grace Village project considered, or would that be the use is just offices?
Which, which project?
Grace Village Community Service, Community Services by the Boys and Girls Club.
Zion Lutheran project that they were.
Okay. Sorry. I, I've heard it by different titles.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I'm, I'm with you. Now, what was the question?
Is it, is the, is the use? Office? Space?
Just gonna say, uh, let me take a step back. Um.
For their design.
I understand your, I, I think I understand your, your question. Let me provide a more general answer.
Okay.
There's, there's not currently any application pending in front of the.
Right.
Planning commission or the board, but we're aware that there may be a future request and this work session is not specific to that request.
Okay.
But what I will answer generally is that, um, properties within the R four, uh, zone district. Religious land uses are, and assembly uses are allowed within the R four zone district. And accessory uses or ancillary uses associated with a religious institution would likely be considered the same. Um, zoning and, and use by right within that zone district.
And that's how.
So they can do, they can do what they would like with the property.
Okay.
In.
And I believe that's.
Terms.
In simple terms, religious land uses are protected use. Um, and the way, when we considered that in our, our land use code updates, the desire was to allow. Uh, religious land uses in, in all zone districts. Um, there might've been one exception for due to lot size density and parking.
I think downtown commercial was excluded.
I think that's correct. I, the table's in your packet. I don't have it open in front of me right this instant, but, um, I believe that that was correct. Um, so, but. Almost all zone districts, um, religious land uses are used by right and any, any facility or structures associated or accessory to those would be included in that.
Okay. I was afraid if it was done by office space, if they would need to maybe consider requesting different. Okay.
Trustee Kenny, real quick. I'm sorry, trustee Daly. I was looking at your.
It's okay. It really doesn't hurt my feelings. It's fine.
I mean, I. The Grace Village project, I know that that we're making the assumption that that's a religious project, but is there a possibility that that turned into a strictly five oh one C three project?
I, that's what I.
That's my concern is that.
And it's being donated and purchased. So that.
Because my initial. That was my initial understanding of that.
So that. We're staying a little bit far from those, from the zone map, but it's. Staff, take a look at that.
We would have them come to the board if they needed to do rezoning for that portion of property. They would just need to bring that request to the board. And it could be rezoned at that point.
Or, you know, like, I don't know, the planning commission requests, or maybe that we would approach that landowner, like that project group. But if we could maybe put that similar request in that we approached them and just.
Better be.
Run, run the idea by them and what, what they're planning on doing. You guys probably know better than we do, but. That was the only one that I was concerned with based on how they're planning on doing it. From what the plans I saw was five oh one C three.
Yeah. Because that doesn't make sense to, if we're making a little bit now. Yeah, whatever.
Anyway, that was, that was the one I saw. Um. I'm loving this full, really wonderful parks, um. Trail potential all the way through town, except for this missing link right here.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah. So curious about that. Um. Uh, I'm seeing some new, uh, is this new? Commercial on this side, or has that always been commercial on the east side?
Yeah. So on the east side of the highway, I, I think, I know where you're pointing. Yeah. Along Jefferson.
Yeah.
Baumgarres, um, is, is there in zone C three, um, south of the, Baumgarres on the north side of Jefferson. South of Jefferson is also zone C three, has been that way for, um, a number of years. So, so that there was no change proposed over there.
Okay.
That's, that was like the proposed lot for another fire station or something at one point or maybe.
There, south of Jefferson, there are two commercial zoned lots. Um, one of them is in, is owned by Wellington Fire Protection District.
Okay. All right. Yeah. I don't have any. Other questions other than the, the one regarding to retention ponds that were. If any of them were recommended to change to residential or commercial that were adjacent to commercial, residential.
Yeah. I'll, I'll highlight a couple of the examples the planning commission had pointed out.
Okay.
Um, on the, the map that you have in front of you at the, um, the corner. East of the high school of the sign, um, there are town homes there south of Saratoga. And there's a detention pond right at that corner.
Right.
Um, on the current map, it doesn't have any zoning district assigned to it. It's white space. There's, there's nothing assigned.
Yeah.
And when the planning commission was looking at this, the, uh, consideration was, well, it's immediately adjacent to. Uh, a residential property. It's a detention pond. It's not going to be developed for anything else, just assign it the same. And, and it's owned by the owners association. So it's private ownership adjacent to residential, just to zone it residential. Um, and that is consistent with, um, there's a, a small parcel, um. East of Wellington Point, um, and north of Pebble Court. Um, Pebble Court is a, another, uh, town home property that Pebble Court was zoned R three, or it's proposed to be zoned R three on this map. And just north of that is some open space and drainage area that was previously zoned town public. And it was identified, well, that's, the town doesn't own that. Why isn't that zoned, um, consistent with the owner's parcel, the HOA and zone it R. Two, consistent with Wellington Point. So that was recommended on the zone map. Those are some of the examples that were identified during this effort of looking at the zone map, just to fix a few things that weren't correct. Maybe from the get-go or to assign a zone district where there was no zone district previously assigned. And then after making that recommendation in the version you see in front of you, the planning commissioners had, had brought this back up and said, well, we did this here and did this there. But we didn't do that in other areas in town. It seems like either it didn't require any changes or it just didn't get looked at because. The public zone district didn't change, but that question has come back with, should we rethink town wide and make sure that we're acting consistently? So that's, that's kind of the background on that.
So retention ponds that are not owned by the town of Wellington essentially that are adjacent to residential. In those, in those scenarios, but then the question was from the planning commission, that, that didn't happen in all the cases. That's kind of the summary of that.
Yeah. I think the, what that's basically what the planning commission identified was we had recommended some changes here and here based on the context there, but we didn't even look at it. In other areas of town where there was apparently no change needed. They're saying, maybe we should rethink that.
Okay. So that's still something on the table that they're considering.
Yeah. And that's, that's kind of how the, excuse me, how the planning commission had left it. They wanted to have a work session to, to discuss that further. And staff hasn't had a chance to finish our research into that.
Yeah.
And so I brought it to your attention tonight because the planning commission may want to change their recommendation once they've had an opportunity to discuss.
Yeah.
Townwide, what does that mean for each individual parcel?
Sure. Okay. Yeah, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Uh, now we'll move on to community survey.
Good evening, mayor and board of trustees, Kelly Hodling, deputy town administrator. Before you is a discussion of the community survey. Um, as trustee Gator mentioned on our, um, organizational chart, the most important people that we serve are, are residents. And what we want to do with this survey is get feedback from them. So within the packet, I included, um. A sample of what that survey results look like. And so Erie is listed in there. And you can get a good feel of the questions that are typical, um, that are asked, that are, that are standard. And these are quality of life questions. It would be like, how is Wellington as a place to live? Um, how is our utility billing service, snow plow services, um, anything that we do as a, uh, an entity, we'd like to, to measure it. Um, if you don't measure it, it, it doesn't matter. So we want to get a baseline survey. And our goal, and of course this would require board trustee support, is to do this every two years. This is rather common that communities. Um, as you'll see in Erie, they, um, they, it's every two years is, is the pretty typical. Um, and then it informs the board of trustees as we're, as you all are making decisions on, um, how things are going in town. And then staff can track that and measure it as well. So the baseline survey. Costs seventeen thousand dollars and that includes, um, mailing it to a sample size, um, to fifteen hundred, um, uh, residents households. And so they'll get a postcard that comes in the mail, um, that asks for them to take the survey. They'll have the option to take it online or a paper copy if they'd like to do that. Um, once we gather those, um, surveys, we get a sample size back that will be statistically valid with a margin, um, of error of, of plus or minus five percent. Um, and so after we do that, then we'll be able to open it up to the community. So it will be not statistically valid. But we will be able to post it on our website of, um, anyone is welcome to take the survey and then you'll get more results back. Um, you'll see within the quote, it, it lists, um, a variety of other add-ons that we could do. And that's what I'd like feedback on tonight. So. Those things within, um, the add-ons, there could be a half page of custom questions. They recommend around three. You don't want to make the survey too lengthy already. We're asking people to probably commit about fifteen minutes. Which in today's TikTok time span is a lot. There's probably a lot. So we would need to be very thoughtful about what those questions could be. And, and I would come back to you in a work session if you choose this option tonight. I know you've discussed different things, but that's why I wanted to include what Erie survey looked like of what are those baseline benchmark, um, type of questions? And some, some of the things that you were interested might already be answered in that. Another option is Spanish translation. Um, that's included on there. And I know that has been a, a focus of the board. So that's also an option. Another one is custom benchmarks. So already included in your baseline survey is benchmarks, but you, some communities that are college town want to say, I want to see. Every college town in America. Well, that's a specific sample size that they would gather. Ours could be, we want to see all Colorado communities or only communities. Under a certain size, under fifteen thousand. So that would be up to the board, but you can see that you already, you do get great data that comes with, um, the standard survey. And then, uh, a final option is the presentation of results. I think the cost is a little much and I'm happy to present it to you for sort of free. Um, so that again, that's another option that the board can consider. So, um, I will open it up to any questions or comments.
Uh, yeah, I'm, yeah, yeah. As long as the rest of the board is, I think having a couple of question, custom questions in there makes a lot of sense. Um, you know, obviously we can all get together and discuss kind of what those would be. I think Spanish translation certainly makes sense. Uh, presentation of results, I. Kelly, I'd, I'd probably leave that up to you if that's all right. And as far as the custom benchmark comparisons go, I don't know that that makes a whole lot of sense until. We've run, you know, got this year's results back and then maybe results two years down the road and then maybe consider such a thing. But I, I don't know that that would make a lot of sense right now.
Trustee Daly.
Spanish translation is a must. Uh, I noticed on Eries, they only have male and female as options. I'd like to see additional options if possible. Um. Something I learned on Monday, I think that I wouldn't have suggested for survey options is make sure that we have. Maybe some, and this is not even specific to the questions that you're asking. Sorry. But regarding the, the, the items that you asked, I kind of would like to see communities. In Colorado, under fifteen thousand. I feel like that would be pertinent personally. I don't know if other people would be interested in that.
So a way we could narrow it down to like rural?
Oh, that might be more.
Communities under fifteen thousand?
Rural and the problem with rural though, in Colorado is that puts us in with mountain. And we don't want to be compared to the mountain.
So, uh, rural towns under fifteen thousand without oil money.
And no, under this elevation, under this elevation.
Yeah. Ladies.
No. Okay. So I, I don't, maybe I take that back. I don't know. Cause that, we don't want to compare against mountain towns. We don't want to do tourists. We don't want to compare against the tourist base economy. Absolutely not. So. Maybe I redact everything I just said about that. But yeah, it's translation for sure.
Trustee Gator. Um, so I would, uh, uh, I think the half page of custom questions is a great idea. Um, I would like to see, um. And if staff can maybe comb through and see, and I haven't had a chance to look at every single question, but if, because there were specific questions, we said, hey, we want to measure this on the survey. If that's already captured in one of those survey questions, it's normal. We don't have to do a custom question, but if it's not captured in that. But I would say the custom questions is a good idea because if all of our questions we've already wanted to ask are captured. Then we can come up with three other ones that we think are important that we didn't currently have on there. So I think that's a good idea. I absolutely agree. Spanish translation. Um, it should be something that'd be included in that. Um, I think the custom benchmark is a good thing and I agree with trust me some down the road. Right now, we just, I, I'm not really concerned about how we stack up against certain people in certain areas. We just want to see where we at. So that we can set a target like we talked about in our strategic planning. We need to be able to set targets for, for, you know, where do we want to get to? Forget what other people are doing. We just need to know where we are now and where we want to go. So, uh, not a bad thing, but I don't think we need it right now. I think it's a great thing to look at maybe two years down the road at that survey, because maybe at that point we're like, hey, we'd like to see how we're stacking up. Um, and I agreed that, thank you for putting it in there. Um, we have incredibly professional staff who know this stuff inside and out with, and honestly. I think they'll do a better job presenting the results because they know our community. Um, and so I'd rather not, I'd, I'd rather send Kelly and her husband. I'd rather give a bonus or something to staff.
All in favor? All in favor? Mayor, take a vote?
So I mean, if if we want to do something to thank you to staff for presenting great, but I'd rather just have our staff do that, because I think they're fully competent to do that, so.
You just get all the raw data for how it works and.
Well, so we get the results, but it would just be paying, I think, for someone to actually come and give us a presentation.
Exactly, they will, they'll do this and what I'll do is just present it from there, I've done that in other communities and it's not a big deal.
Like paying for an inspirational speaker.
Yeah.
Is it possible to get the raw data?
I'll have to understand what your question is more in depth and maybe we can talk after the meeting of what you're looking for.
So and then the only other question that I had was on the fifteen hundred, that, so they just that to do the statistics, that's, they just do that consistently across the board. And then we open it up to everyone, so basically, when you look at comparisons, they look at just the fifteen hundred, but then we would get the results from everything all together as well, so we can get that from. Anybody who wants to take the survey.
Exactly, so you'll have your statistically valid survey that gets the mailed out, that it's verified from that household. And then after that, after that survey closes, then we will open it up on our channels, on the town newsletter. Post something probably at the library with a QR code of if anyone wants to take it, because more data is great, and so there might be a little bit of variation in those, sometimes there is.
What did we budget for the survey, we budgeted thirty thousand, right? And so if we look at this, we're looking at roughly twenty, we'll call it twenty five thousand if we add in, oh no, no, less than that, less than that. About twenty one, twenty two thousand if we add in the top two. What would be the cost, do do we think, because this is one thing that I think, we've heard this from people over and over again, it's great to do stuff on social media, it's great to do stuff online. But it is really helpful, especially for some of the older generation to get, actually get something in the mail. Could we look at either whether it's putting an insert, or I know you can do with the post office, like the mass mailing that's super cheap, or you just go. And put like some super simple flyer that's got links or how they can do the survey? Well, no, no, no.
Well, it does a sample size of fifteen hundred.
Go in the mail to certain people.
How you want it, right?
Utility bill, so that could be another for if you, after the survey has the mail.
Done, what I'm asking is, can we then put something together where? Would we be able to get after the fact who those surveys were sent to, so we don't double up?
No.
No?
No, that's where it's, that's why you have the the actual fifteen hundred that it's mailed to.
Sure.
But we we could, I I also don't want to make it confusing that if you get it, if you already got it after the fact, it looks like we're not being proactive. Well, and that's why, you know, I could, I could talk with our our senior center and, you know. You know, reach, find a way to reach different populations, but. Let me think about that.
Okay, so that's just something to consider, because if we budgeted thirty thousand. I imagine we could for another couple thousand dollars send something pretty simple via mass mail to just let people know, hey, that. Again, and that's another means to get that out once we're doing that, so that if they didn't see it online, they didn't get it there, so whether we do utility bill or some, so I'd like to look into that. Because that is something we've heard from people, is hey, send us something in the mail, it'd be nice.
And one of our customer, our standard question is, how do you receive town information? So this will be really helpful to know what that sample size is.
Trustee Teets.
I agree with the first two, the questions and the translation, I also agree on the second two that. A custom benchmark, I feel we're Wellington in general, so having a benchmark out of what we understand now is. Doesn't make sense right now. And then presentation of the routes, results is, I would rather hear it from Ms. Houtling anyways.
Perfect. First week, and you, you on board?
I agree.
Perfect. Yep, yep, I agree.
I'm concerned about some of the demographic questions, I don't think they're very.
We can, we can alter those. So I I I also included a couple other communities, just their the link to it. Staff will be working with them to modify questions, so like, one question in Eries is garbage collection. We don't do that. In house, some municipalities might be full service in a different way, so we will still have to go through and modify, and then what I'd like to do is bring that to the board of. Here's what we, here's what they gave us, here's what we're looking at to modify, and that's when we can also talk about the custom questions, so if there's demographic questions in there that you're not comfortable with, or you want to add something. I will seek feedback from the board.
Wonderful, okay, I just want to make sure we have a chance to do that too.
Yep, absolutely.
Holden? All right, got what you need? Perfect. We're done.
Hey, thank you, thank you.